Good evening. I will now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, August 13th, 2018. We'll begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Simpson.
Everybody can rise. I know everybody's seen this sign right here. You can see it? Tonight, we're here to show some respect for the community as far as letting them know as councilors, people working in and out, the administration, that we do care. We care for many, many reasons. I think the mayor's gonna be talking about it tonight. But I just felt that we've been praying all over this city, and we need to pray in this house. We need to give, let people in the community understand that we understand about prayer. And I have invited a special guest, Reverend Malachi Walker, and I asked for his wife to come because all of you know that he lost a daughter in gun violence. And they have yet to solve the murder, and I know it's special in his heart. And I just wanted to bring it home by inviting him to lead us in prayer. And I asked for him and his wife. And I want all the councilors or anybody in this audience who want to join me down here to step up here to the podium right now. Come on, Reverend. Come on. Mayor, you can come on.
Thank you so much, Mr. President and Councilman Joe Simpson, for this opportunity to invite me to come in for prayer. This really means a whole lot to me, especially being a former firefighter for 28 and a half years for the city of Indianapolis. And now I'm pastor and co-pastor with my wife at Great Commission Church of God, and also the founder and director of Young Men Incorporated Youth Ministry, a ministry that reaches out to young people and primarily I work with young males. In 2008, we did lose a daughter to violence in this city. And it has yet to be solved, but we truly have faith, and we're hanging on in there that one day we'll get our chance to go to court. But this violence in the city has to stop. The work that I do, there's been a lot of questions that what am I doing? Is it working? Am I gonna give up? My answer to that, I would never, ever give up, especially if it has to do with our young people. So at this time, I will ask you all to brow your heads and join with me in this prayer. All wise and sovereign God, we are thankful. We are loving. We thank you, oh God, for allowing us to be recipients of today's blessings. We thank you, oh God, because you are God, and besides you, there's no other. God, it was you who made us and not we ourselves. As we come humble as we can. Father, we realize, oh Lord, that there are times that you said in your word that there's gonna be trouble. Trouble times are here. God, we are facing some times in our city, Lord, like we've never seen before. But I know, oh God, by faith, we trust and believe in you. God, we pray, oh God, right now, that there's going to be a peace that will come upon this city like it never had before. God, we're not giving up. We're holding on to your unchanging hands. God, we are trusting you, for there's no one else. God, you are going to bring a peace. You're gonna use a people to bring that peace about. Father, in the book of James, chapter 5, verse 16, it says, "The effectual fervent prayer of a righteous man availeth much." And God, we strongly believe that there's something that's gonna happen. But God is gonna take a collective of people. And Father, as I look out in this room, I see leaders, I see chiefs, I see police officers, Lord, I see whole lots of community leaders, oh Lord, that work in public safety. And Lord, I pray, oh God, that you would just shower down upon them, that you would move in their lives, touch their hearts right now, oh God. Move, oh Lord. We pray, oh God, for law enforcement. We pray, oh God, for firefighters. We pray, oh God, for every department that has something to do with public safety within this city. Father, this is a city that you are concerned of, just like you were concerned with the city of Nineveh. You are concerned with the city of Indianapolis. And we trust and we believe, God, you're gonna turn this thing around because you're gonna use a people, a people like councilmen's, a people like law enforcements and firefighters. We're all collectively gonna come together. God, you're gonna turn this city around. You're gonna move, oh God. We're gonna see a drop in violence, oh God. It's coming. It's coming. All we got to do is do our part. For the Bible says, "Faith without works is dead." Father, we gonna work. We're gonna work on law enforcement side. We're gonna work, oh Lord, with every position that each and every one of us hold right now. There's gonna be a work that's coming from us. But God, prayer is our number one thing. Lord, they say that we need more than prayer. Yes, we do. We need work. We realize that it's not all about prayer, but it's work. But prayer is first. The Bible says, "Seek ye first the kingdom of God and your righteousness, and all things will be added unto them." And Lord, we are coming together, and we're gonna work together. We're gonna move together. We're gonna do things, oh God, according to your will and your way. And when we do that, we're gonna see a change like we never saw before. When we do that, Lord, you're gonna turn this city around like it's never been turned before. God, we're gonna see something. We're gonna believe it right now, but we're gonna see something now. God, you said, "Ask, and it shall be done." So, Lord, we're asking, and we know it's gonna be done. So we give it all to you. We're gonna trust you right now. We believe in you. That, God, we pray for all the families who lost loved ones in this city due to the violence. We pray for everyone who are out there in the city, who are doing something, oh God, to reduce this violence and to stop it. God, do it right now. Move in the hearts. Change the hearts. For we know it's done. We're not giving up. We're gonna trust you. In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Westler. All right. We see that we have 24 councilors present. Counselor Clay has asked to be excused for this evening. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President. Can you hear me? Okay. I'd like to acknowledge all those in law enforcement and IFD tonight, but especially those who are here in support of Proposal 275, the gun violence proposal. Can you please stand, please, and be recognized? I'm sorry for your loss, and hopefully we can start moving change for an additional way that we haven't tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Crider.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize Pastor Tim Lindsay, as well as the students, staff, and faculty from Perry Meridian High School. Please stand.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to recognize a friend and the Assistant Township Trustee for Wayne, Susan Scott, and her husband, Rick, who is one of the chiefs for Wayne Fire.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several, so I'll do them all together. I'd like to welcome Social Justice Act activist Tony Davis and Near East Sider Anthony Beverley, and my Aspie Brothers and Sisters are here, including Georgia Cravy and Michael Torres.
Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize longtime friend Joanna Lynn and her son, and the Boy Scout troop that's here tonight.
Counselor Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With us this evening is the Messiah Lodge members back here in the back. Could you please stand, please? Thank you all for coming.
Very good. The next item on our agenda is official communications, and we are honored this evening to have with us the Mayor of the City of Indianapolis, the Honorable Joseph H. Hogsett, to make his presentation of the city's proposed 2019 budget. Mayor Hogsett.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
... action by our Indiana General Assembly and the City County Council's collaboration and support. We are submitting a plan tonight that will result in an investment of more than $126 million next year on our bridges, our roads, our streets, and yes, sidewalks as well. And again, thanks to the work of this council earlier this year, we have reestablished the city's street maintenance division, and we have provided the Department of Public Works with much-needed equipment. This budget will continue that work, fully funding six street maintenance crews that will dramatically improve our city's ability to stop deterioration before it happens and maintain our neighborhood secondary and side roads. With your support, we will also continue updating 28,000 streetlights with new energy-efficient technology to save taxpayers' dollars. Before year's end, we will be using those cost savings from the retrofit to install new streetlights in locations all over the county, from Shelby and Stop 11 to Shadland and 75th. And even as this proposed budget would infuse millions into our city's infrastructure, we remain committed to stretching tax dollars to support even more neighborhood projects. This budget will continue the innovative Neighborhood Infrastructure Partnership Program, which we announced earlier this year. Through partnerships with community groups, we will double the effective value of the tax dollars you allocate to this program, and that will jump-start projects that frankly would not have otherwise been possible. We do these things because we know that the strength of our city is directly tied to the strength of our neighborhoods. And even as we honor our communities' past, we acknowledge that the future well-being of Indianapolis requires us to make more and better investments in those places where we live, where we work, and where we play. And nowhere is this more apparent than in our efforts to combat the scourge of violent crime that continues to affect too many of our neighbors. That's why next year, we will continue to grow our police and public safety efforts, both with new recruits and with new technology. The budget submitted to the council tonight fully funds two new IMPD recruit classes next year, keeping our city on a path to fully funding a net gain of 150 new officers by the end of 2019. We will also continue to bolster data-driven policing, as this budget proposes investing millions in new anti-crime technology, including cameras and license plate scanners, to improve real-time enforcement against violent criminals. And in a continuation of a pledge made in 2016, this budget also increases the Crime Prevention Grant Program by $225,000, bringing the 2019 program allocation to $2.75 million, an increase of $750,000 since 2015. Coupled with the Office of Public Health and Safety's Violence Prevention Partnership and continued funding for the Witness Protection Programming, funding for preventative programming in 2019 will surpass $4 million. Counselors, thanks to your leadership, we are on the precipice of doubling our community-based crime reduction efforts in just three years. But that's not all. After years of necessary cuts and hard decisions, we will, for the first time this year, be able to make new strategic investments in our neighborhoods. This budget will staff Indy Parks with new recreation coordinators and athletic department positions, crucial personnel to engage our city's young people. This budget will begin to undo decades of cuts in our city's long-term planning capabilities, putting more staff in place to help neighborhoods chart their own destiny. This budget will fund nearly $2 million in scholarships as part of Indy Achieves, allowing residents of all ages to earn the high-quality degree or credential that they need for the 21st-century economy. This budget will fund, for the first time, two full-time veteran service officers who will connect our veterans to resources and help them navigate federal bureaucracy. Furthermore, this budget will fund a long-overdue disparity study to ensure that work being done across all of Indianapolis reflects all of Indianapolis. And because each year, animal control officers respond to tens of thousands of service calls, we will be adding new staff to lighten the load, increase response times, all while making new investments in veterinarian care at our shelter facility. 2018 was a year of progress in Indianapolis, from criminal justice reform, road repaving, infrastructure development, and community development. We are continuing to shine as a place where we work best because we work together. Every single resident should be proud that our city can accomplish what so many others in government can't seem to: cooperation. Over the next two months, as you deliberate on this budget, I ask that we do so in a spirit of cooperation. As long as we all live in one city, we should all govern as one city. And in so doing, I am convinced, we will all prosper as one city.
Fellow counselors, let us take a five-minute recess. For the next item on our agenda of official communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City-County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special District Service -- Special Service District Councils will be held in the City-County Building in the Council Chambers on Monday, August 13, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osalee, President, City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the State of Indiana, I call to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, July 20, 2018, a copy of a legal notice of General Ordinance Number 49218, Proposal Number 120218. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, Clerk of the City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City-County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances: Fiscal Ordinance Numbers 17 and 18; General Ordinance Numbers 49 through 58; Special Ordinance Numbers, Number 8; General Resolution, Number 15; Special Resolution Numbers 24 through 29. Joseph H. Hogsett, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Second.
And the next item on our agenda is approval of journals for July 16, 2018. Do I have consent?
Second.
We will now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 310, introduced by Counselors Kreider, Cordy, Coats, and McQuillan, which recognizes the Perry Meridian High School Bands.
Thank you, Mr. President. A special resolution recognizing the Perry Meridian High School Bands. Whereas the Perry Meridian High School Marching Falcons placed in the top three at all invitational contests in the 2017 season, earning awards for Best Music and Best Percussion, and qualifying as an Indiana State School Music Association Scholastic Class State finalist with distinction and general effect, and...
And whereas the Perry Meridian High School Bands earned the ISSMA All-Music Award for 2017, which requires gold ratings in marching band jazz, concert band, and having students advance to the state solo and ensemble finalist. And whereas the Perry Meridian High School Jazz Ensemble earned straight gold ratings at the Jazz Festival in Group One, and...
And Perry Meridian High School Symphonic Band earned a gold rating at the ISSMA Concert Band Organizational. And whereas the Perry Meridian High School Wind Ensemble earned a gold rating in sight reading at the ISSMA State Qualifications. And whereas multiple students earned gold ratings at the ISSMA State in the categories of solo and ensemble. And two students, Luke Greenwood and Jordan Robbins, won gold in Indiana Bandmasters Association All-State Band. Now, and therefore...
Class of 83 Melaphona and Clarinet. Be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis, Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes the Perry Meridian High School Bands. Section 2, the council congratulates the PMHS bands for their notable achievements and wishes them continued success in all future endeavors. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, and he has.
Actually, he will be. We'll have to mail it later.
And he will be, because it's PMHS, the greatest. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 363414, sponsored by Counselors Kreider, Cordy, Coats, McQuillan, and soon to be passed, not quite yet passed, by the City-County Council this 13th day of August. Mr. President, we so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like to invite some of the faculty to speak.
Please.
Thank you.
Well, I wasn't preparing any remarks for today, but we just, we enjoy a lot of outstanding support from our administration from top to bottom, starting with Mr. Mapes, our superintendent, our building principal at the high school, Mr. Kurt Bodeker, our music department chair, Ms. Crawford, and my wonderful colleagues, Ms. Walsh and Ms. Hacker in the music department. I'm just blessed to be afforded the opportunity to teach some outstanding kids who have some pretty amazing work ethic. They give me an opportunity every day that when I hear folks complain about young people these days, I get to talk about my kids and the outstanding work that they do and their efforts. So, just proud to be a part of it and honored to teach our kids. Thanks.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 311, introduced by Counselors Kreider, Cordy, Coats, and McQuillan, which recognizes the Perry Meridian High School Choirs.
Thank you, Mr. President. A special resolution recognizing the Perry Meridian High School Choirs. Whereas Perry Meridian High School earned the Indiana State School Music Association All-Choir Award for the seventh year in award, seventh year in a row. And whereas eight ensembles, including 72 singers overall, and nine soloists received gold ratings at state solo and ensembles competition, with 18 gold star ratings and vocal events won at the district level. And whereas then-and-now Silver Symphonic Singers and the Freshman Choir received gold ratings in sight reading, and...
Whereas then-and-now and standing-room-only SRO choirs each won first runner-up in the concert choir category at the Franklin Central Hoosier Show Choir Classic Competition, gold ratings at the ISSMA Show Choir Contest with distinction, golds in ISSMA State Qualifications, and whereas...
Two Perry Meridian High School seniors were selected for the 2018 Indiana All-Star Choir, Max Sandifer and Lane Shifries. And whereas every choir received gold ratings from the judges for all performances at ISSMA Concert Choir Contest, now therefore...
Be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis, Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes the Perry Meridian High School Choirs. Section 2, the council congratulates PMHS choirs for their notable achievements and wishes them continued success in all future endeavors. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, invited. Section 4, the resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with the Indiana Code 363414, special resolution sponsored by Counselors Kreider, Cordy, Coats, and McQuillan, and soon to be passed by the City-County Council this 13th day of August 2018. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Mr. President, once again, with your permission, we'd like to invite the faculty to speak.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this opportunity and for this recognition. It is a privilege to be a teacher in Indiana and a privilege to be a teacher at Perry Meridian High School. And again, we appreciate the recognition.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 312, introduced by Counselor Oliver, which honors the Masjid Al Munine for their support and contribution to the community by facilitating the advancement of spiritual, community, and economic development goals.
Fellow council, this is a special resolution recognizing something that's repeated all over our city, and oftentimes, they're not given thanks. This is not the only group that does such wonderful work. There are many, many groups, but this one tonight is special to me. Because of the rise in poverty caused by low wages or no unemployment whatsoever in our community, we have various pockets, sometimes persons scattered throughout the city. But when it's compacted sometimes in a geographical area with high unemployment, poverty level wages, it produces hunger. How could we have hunger in a land of plenty? But we do have. And you and I, and the Masjid Munine group, have tried to address that by having a, what they do best, and that's to provide services to our community that's badly needed. This is a special resolution honoring the Majid Munin. Thank you. You better stand a little closer to me. For their support and contribution to the community by facilitating the special advancement of spiritual, community, and economic development goals with a fundamental mission to work to fill the overall aspirations and spiritual needs according to the Quran and Suni of the Prophet Muhammad. Whereas, Majid Munin was established in 2000 to fill the void by a Masjid on the east side of Indianapolis, and is the second Masjid in Indiana to establish five prayers. And whereas, founding members issued in their bylaws to be open to all, with the emphasis on the Quran, the Sunnah, and community service. Whereas in 2001, the Masjid Munin purchased a 7,000-square-foot facility and began building renovations by adding a prayer area and the cosmetic necessary for a comfortable house of prayer. And whereas, the Munin legal status is a nonprofit Indiana organization managed by a charon board with constitution and bylaws. And whereas, Sharon Indianapolis Inc. is a social arm of the Majid, a social and advocacy center which provides services such as a food bank, a quarterly health clinic, summer feeding program for children, a youth summer camp, MLK Days of Service, back-to-school giveaways, addiction counseling, food distribution, referral services for job training, employment, housing, and counseling. The Straight Path, which is a support group for men and women recently released from incarceration, now therefore be resolved by the City-County Council, City of Indianapolis, Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council honors the Munin for their support and contribution to the community by facilitating the advancement of spiritual, community, and economic development goals with a fundamental mission to work to fill the overall aspiration and spiritual needs according to the Quran and the Prophet of Muhammad. Section 2, the council extends its appreciation for the work of the Munin in the community and wishes them continued success. The mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu. This resolution, Counselors, shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-414. This special resolution was sponsored by myself, and hopefully, it will be passed and supported by all counselors. Mr. President, I so move for this motion to be accepted.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. President. Now, we're here, I'd like to hear from two, and where's my brother? Where'd he go? Right here. And then we take you.
Well, on behalf of Masjid Munin, I would like to thank you, the City Council, and the City of Indianapolis for recognizing the work that we've been doing for many, many years, and that we will continue to the best of our effort to try and make our presence here in Indianapolis one that is worthy of praise and glory. And of course, in the sight of God, we would like to thank all of you for what you've done for us. Thank you.
Now, we hear from Chairman of the Board. Please, sir.
I greet you, Salaam alaikum, peace be upon each and every one of you. I want to thank Councilman Oliver for presenting us to the City of Indianapolis, to the City- County Council, and thank each and every one of you. Our intention was only to be good neighbors and to serve the neighborhood that we live in. We see need, we know that that need is there. There's a chapter in the Quran, and it's called "the neighbor," or neighborly needs. And it says, "See the people who have no faith. They have no religion, and they repulse the orphan. They don't feed the poor. They don't feed the hungry and the poor. And they worship only to be seen of other men. And when it comes time for to give neighborly needs, they're not there to give them." And so, our intention is to please God by serving Him, by serving our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 313. Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd like to make a motion to postpone this to the September 10, 2018 meeting. We're still working on getting some of the members together.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor.
Aye.
Very good. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 327, introduced by Counselors Feaster, Adamson, and Johnson, which recognizes Michael Lamont Green for going above and beyond in his teaching duties at Paramount School of Excellence.
Good evening, everyone. While they're making their way down here, I just kind of wanted to give a little bit of background. Counselors get petitions quite often for special resolutions, and all of them are certainly deserving. But this one really made me excited because it was a fourth grader who wanted to recognize her teacher. The background here is, and I hope as you hear the resolution and you hear the reasons why, it will inspire someone to think about how they might apply this teachable moment in their lives. Myla was assigned to a fourth-grade class, and it was really stressing her out. She didn't know if she could cope with it or not. And so, her mom went to the teacher and said, "Myla has a condition called trichotillomania." And I think I pronounced that correctly. What it results in is stress causes her to pull out her hair. And if she had certain devices that she could have at her fingertips, it helped her to control this. But those weren't allowed in the school or in the classroom. And so, they went to the teacher, and Mr. Green, who's being recognized tonight, is the one who went to the class and explained the situation and said, "There will be no bullying here. This is the situation. This is how we're going to resolve it, and I expect you to help Myla." So, as you listen to the resolution recognizing Mr. Green, I hope that you will think about the compassion that he has shown in this situation and how that could be applied in other situations. Thank you.
This is City-County Special Resolution Number 34, a special resolution recognizing Michael Lamont Green for going above and beyond in his teaching duties at Paramount School of Excellence. Whereas, Michael Green teaches 5th grade at Paramount School of Excellence, a charter school located on the near east side in District 17. Whereas, even at an early age, Michael knew he wanted to teach or to be involved in the school setting in some capacity in life, and began by participating... school setting in some capacity in life, and began by participating in grade school as a classroom monitor and a classroom helper, later helping to host after-school functions and events. And whereas...
Whereas with a true heart for children and teaching, Mr. Green took special efforts with Myla Spainhauer, a new student who along with her parents were getting used to a new diagnosis for a hair pulling disorder called, oh man, I gotta say it again, trica, trichotill- I want to make sure I say it right. Trichotillomania. Okay. If I had a teacher like Mr. Green, I would've got that the first time. To make sure that she not only succeeded and learned in this class setting, but that she was treated with respect by her classmates and flourished under his watchful eye. And whereas when it came time for May to move from fourth to fifth grade, she was thrilled to learn that Mr. Green would be moving on to teach fifth grade, and she could continue as his student and receive the same encouragement and patience that had helped her to thrive and exceed expectations.
And whereas, being such an attentive and caring teacher, Mr. Green takes time to tutor children after school, serves as a mentor, and is part of the school's social committee team. And whereas, Michael and his wife Kristen have four children of their own to nurture as well. Patricia, Isaac, and twins, and that comes to my heart because I have twins. The twins are Christian and Jordan, and the family attends Grace Apostolic Church, where Michael also serves as praise and worship leader, choir director, and bus driver, as if he's not busy enough. Now therefore be it resolved by the City County Council and the city of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana.
Section one, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes Michael Lamont Green for going above and beyond in his teaching duties at Paramount School of Excellence. Section two, the council wishes Mr. Green, his family, and all the students whose lives he touches continued success in all future endeavors. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu. Section three, or sorry, section four, the resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-414, and I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. With that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Green.
I just would like to say it's an honor and a privilege to serve my community, serve my students and the families, and I just hope to be a better person, and I think that I will be because of this. Thank you so much.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 253, refer to the Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
I wasn't paying. I was looking at something else. Can you tell what proposal that is again? 253. Okay. Huh? What page is it on? It's right there. Thank you. Sorry about that. Administration and Finance Committee reappoint Janie Downs to the Equal Opportunity Advisory Board. Pass out of committee eight to zero. Also, Mr. Chair, if I can go to proposal 254, with consent, I think 254, 255.
Consent.
Thank you. Administration and Finance Committee reappoint Marion Fay Goodwin to the Equal Opportunity Advisory Board. Came out of committee eight, zero, 255. Administration and Finance Committee reappoint Douglas Hudson, Hudsoner to the Equal Opportunity Advisory Board, out of committee eight, zero. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from councilors? The motion carries, 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 257, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proposal number 257 appoints Brian Robinson to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division One. Mr. Robinson stated that he has a passion for seeing cities develop and revitalize. Mr. Robinson went on to share that he is very involved in the community and sits on several boards, and would like to bring some of his knowledge to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division One. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries, 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 258, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals 258 through 265.
Stand, stand.
Thank you. 258 through 265 appoints Edward Batista, Matt Kramer, Jacob Distress, I apologize if I butcher these names, Terry Garcia, Mike Halsted, Trinity Hart, Linda Osborne, Paul Smith to the Greater Virginia Avenue Corridor Economic Improvement District Board. The appointees introduced themselves and stated what business and which area they represented. The proposal's passed out of committee by a vote of nine to zero, with Councilor Holliday abstaining. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Any comments from councilors?
Mr. President.
Just a moment. Councilor Miller, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank the council for first supporting the EID, and then also hopefully tonight for supporting the board. I really think this is a great way for business communities, neighborhoods, as Wood replace in Councilor Adams's district has done. Good way for them to find a way to pull their own money together and pave their future. So you're going to make a big difference in Fountain Square and Fletcher Place with this, and I would ask obviously for your support. Thank you.
Councilor Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please note I need to abstain on these votes as some of the appointees or proposed appointees are customers of mine.
Very good. Thank you very much. That's noted. Any other comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 23 to zero with one abstention. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 266, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 266 confirms the mayor's appointment of Brian Madison as the Director of the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services. Mr. Madison gave a brief PowerPoint which gave insight on his work history and the work of the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero, and Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from councilors? Councilor Miller.
I apologize, I was on vacation and not able to be at the committee, but I'd love to be added as a cosponsor, and fantastic pick by the mayor. Mr. Madison will do an awesome job.
Very good. Any additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 268, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 268, 2018, appoints Nancy Swazgowski to the Rubin Engagement Center Board. Ms. Swazgowski said that she is a pediatrician and that she has her master's in public health and administration, and extremely excited to be serving on this board. She also said there is a major problem in Marion County with mental health and addiction. There needs to be a new innovative model for treatment for mental health and addiction and care, and the Rubin Engagement Center is one of those new models and would be very proud to participate again. Councilor Simpson moved, seconded by Councilor Coach, to send proposal 268 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries, 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 269, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 269, 2018, appoints Chris Duzenberry to the Early Intervention Planning Council. Ms. Duzenberry stated that she would like to represent the township schools if appointed to this board. Councilor Feaster moved, seconded by Councilor Evans, to send proposal 269 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Councilor Feaster.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to comment that Dr. Duzenberry will definitely be an asset to this board. She has done a lot of work already, and so I look forward to her future endeavors.
Thank you. Any additional comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries, 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is the overview, the presentation of the proposed 2019 City County Annual Budget by Mr. Fadi Kadura, the city controller. I will ask councilors to please hold all questions tonight for subsequent committee meetings. Controller.
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, leaders Gray and McQuillan, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you an overview of the 2019 budget. I would like to thank Mayor Hogshead for his leadership on helping, guiding us through the priorities of this budget. I'd like to thank the president, the vice president, the leaders of the caucuses and all councilors for your leadership in helping us shape this 19 budget. I'll be brief, and I will not recite the initiatives that the mayor covered in his speech, so my speech will be more focused on the details of the math details of the budget, if you will. Can we move to the slide? Two years ago, when we introduced the first budget, the 17 budget, we emphasized that the city's budget, even though it's an annual budget, we're looking at the city's fiscal strategy on a multi-year plan. The framework that highlighted that strategy revolved around critical ideas, including balancing the budget, smart sizing city-county government to ensure that we're providing the most effective services to our citizens, to preserve and protect fund balances, to ensure that agencies are able to fund their needs on an annual basis, to pay off debt and reduce the city's overall long-term liabilities, to improve services to our citizens through efficiencies recognized by aligning business processes and IT systems and functions between agencies, and to critically focus on investments made in public safety and infrastructure, neighborhood development, and economic development for the city of Indianapolis. And finally, everything we did, we were conscious to ensure that the city's ratings, credit ratings, continue to be protected. That is the guiding framework for every budget that we introduce, but it's a multi-year strategy that allows the city to continue working based on a fiscally prudent policy and budgets. The next slide shows the 2019 introduced budgets. Our revenues are expected to come in at $1,174,007,64,596. Our appropriations and expenses are projected at $1,174,357,406. That leaves the city's 2019 budget with a projected surplus of $407,000. The next slide shows the appropriations and the revenues, and two pie charts that represent where we're spending these dollars on the appropriation side, and how much we're collecting in taxes versus other types of revenues. On the left side, on my left side, the appropriations pie chart represents our spending on an overall budget level. Thirty-seven percent of our budget is spent on public safety initiatives, 23% is spent on criminal justice services, and then 25% is spent on neighborhood-related services, including infrastructure and other types of neighborhood services, 8% on executive, legislative, and administrative spend, 7% on that service and pension obligations. It might be helpful to remind our esteemed councilors that the distinction between public safety agencies versus criminal justice agencies is that public safety agencies are the city side of agencies such as IMPD and IFD. Criminal justice agencies are the ones on the county side. Those are the composed of the prosecutor's office, public defender courts, sheriff, community corrections, forensics, and other county-related agencies. On my right-hand side of the slide, looking at the revenues, approximately 62% of our budget is based on taxes collected, 25% on intergovernmental funds. These include federal and state grant dollars that we receive. Charges for services is about 9%, and then receipts of other types of fees, 2%, and fines and forfeitures at less, 1% or a little bit less. The next slide shows the breakdown of revenues, income tax versus property taxes and other types of taxes and fees collected. The two major points to highlight from this slide is that there is a growth in income tax, which is the green portion of your bar, going from $317 million to $336 million. That is roughly speaking an increase of $19 million in income tax, comparing 18 to 19. On the property tax side, the organic growth of property taxes is about $9 million. However, what you see on the blue portion of the bar is that we go from $348 million to $352 million. So you may ask, if it's 9 million, how does the bar chart represent only $4 million? That $4 million is the net increase. We lost other types of property taxes due to actions outside of the control of the city of Indianapolis. I'll share with you two examples. The first, there is a state formula that sets the assessed value growth quotient, and it was reduced. This is a state function, not a local function, that dictates how much we collect in property taxes. And the second, actions by other local taxing units in Marion County, when their budgets are approved by DLGF, it impacts the tax rate in Indianapolis and in Marion County. If that tax rate is dropped, that means that we collect less revenues. If it goes up, we collect a little bit more. So the net increase in property taxes is about 9 million, the increase in organic growth in property taxes is 9 million, however, you only see a net increase of 4 due to other changes that are outside of our control. And the next slide is a comparison of income tax and property taxes in a stacked chart that shows you that historically since 2011, property taxes tend to be a little bit stagnant. I think they have a technical issue that is displaying in the background.
Repeating, babe.
Appreciate it. This chart, what is, represents, it represents growth in income tax and property taxes since 2011. So over the last eight years, the highlights- So over the last eight years, the highlight of this slide is that where we're counting on our strategy to increase revenues on the income tax side. As you see, property taxes, they tend to grow, but not at the speed that we wish to see. And that's mainly because property taxes are capped at a certain level by state law that we can't exceed, and it regulates how much we collect. The next slide specifically breaks the revenue, property taxes versus income tax with numbers. So it can look at our one point one seven billion dollar budget. Three hundred fifty-two million is from property taxes. Three hundred thirty-five million comes from income tax. Two hundred eighty-five, sorry, two hundred eighty-eight point five million dollars comes from intergovernmental transfers, including federal and state dollars. And then the rest of it from other taxes and fines and forfeitures, licenses and permits. The next slide breaks down the appropriations by function which I just covered. Roughly speaking, sixty percent of the city-county budget, the one point one seven billion, is spent on public safety and criminal justice, and about twenty-five percent, or roughly speaking, two hundred ninety-five million dollars, are spent on neighborhood-related services. Next slide divides the appropriations, the one point one seven billion, based on city agencies versus county agencies. The city's share of the one point one seven billion dollar budget is roughly speaking, seven hundred eighty-two million dollars. On the city's side, IMPD receives thirty-three percent of the city's share of all revenues. IFD follows at twenty-four percent, followed by Public Works at twenty-three percent, and the Department of Metropolitan Development at eight percent. Parks and Recreation at five percent, and other neighborhood services at four percent. The next slide shows the appropriation on the county side, their share of county agencies out of the total, overall total budget. The sheriff's office budget is thirty-five percent of the county's agency's revenues. Eighteen, followed by eighteen percent for the superior courts. Nine percent for information services. Seven percent for the public defender. Ten percent for the prosecutor. The blue portion of the pie chart that represents twenty-one percent of the county's budget includes the administrative offices on the county side, including the elected offices or elected officials' offices, the auditor, the treasurer's office, surveyor, assessor, recorder's office, and other agencies, including forensics and community corrections and other agencies. The next slide shows change in fund balances, specific to tax-supported funds. And these dollars are in millions, in millions of dollars. The yellow line is what historically the Office of Finance and Management recommended that the city of Indianapolis should maintain in fund balance an amount equal to at least ten percent out of its operating budget. The green line represents these tax-supported revenues, and we highlighted that in two thousand and sixteen, we had a spike in revenues due to the one-time distribution of roughly speaking, fifty-three million dollars from the state of Indiana. But if you look at years two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and nineteen, specifically looking at the green dotted line, we go from eighty point three million dollars to one hundred seven million dollars. So we are, when we say we're protecting the city's fund balances, we want to ensure that the city has enough cash to run based on if we run as a city into a crisis such as a recession or drop in forecast of revenue collections. The blue line represents the tax-supported dollars, but it also includes the fiscal stability fund, which I'm happy to report to you tonight that after two years, we, this budget restores the fiscal stability fund to the eighty historical level of eighty million dollars. So this is critical to show rating agencies that the city has enough cash and reserves to address emergencies. Next slide, if you recall, in two thousand and sixteen, the council approved a proposal or an ordinance that the administration proposed to protect city fund balances. And I appreciate the leadership of the council for approving that proposal that became a city ordinance. According to that proposal, different types of funds must meet certain thresholds and never dip below these thresholds. So that's a literal translation of the policy of protecting fund balances. In our finance world, we call these funds unassigned funds. And the threshold that the council approved at that time was ten percent. If you look at the two thousand and sixteen and seventeen audited numbers, and when I say audited numbers, these are the numbers provided by the external auditor who audits the city's books and submits these reports to the State Board of Accounts. The two thousand and sixteen unassigned funds, the policy calls for ten percent funds to be available, which translates into sixty-one point two million. We were able to preserve ninety-four million dollars, and we exceeded that threshold. We are, we were at fifteen point four percent, which is about five point four percent above the stated threshold. In two thousand and seventeen, same thing, the policy required us to be at the ten percent threshold. I'm happy to report that we maintained a fifteen point six percent fund balance, which translates into roughly speaking, ninety-nine point eight million dollars. On the second slide or the following slide, this is a different type of fund that we've requested from the council to approve. We call that the unrestricted fund balance. The unrestricted fund balance threshold that was approved by the council calls the administration to maintain at least seventeen percent in fund balance, of unrestricted fund balance. I'm happy to report that in sixteen, we exceeded the seventeen percent. We were at twenty-eight point six. And in two thousand and seventeen, we exceeded the seventeen percent. We were at twenty-seven point eight percent. Next slide, in conjunction with the budget that we proposed, I believe it was introduced on tonight's agenda, a bond resolution or authorization proposal that the administration submitted after working with several councilors that calls for the approval of a total of one hundred twenty million dollars worth of bonds that can be spent over the next three years on infrastructure-related expenses. The source of funding or revenue for these bonds will come from the growth of gas taxes that are collected over the next years. As you know, by state law, gas taxes will go up every year by a penny for the next few years. So we are bonding against the growth. We're not locking existing revenues. And what that allows us to do is to have a fully programmed resurfacing, an infrastructure program for at least the next four years. Similar to the stormwater program, we will have a resurfacing program that deals with infrastructure, that deals with bridges, that deals with sidewalks. And Director Parker will have a full plan to present to the council and to committees during, over the next two months. This new investment will bring the total city's plan, updated four-year infrastructure plan, that will spend or invest a little over half a billion dollars over the next four years by two thousand and twenty-two. So over five hundred million dollars will be spent on infrastructure between now and two thousand and twenty-two. The next slide, in my first slide, I talked about our fiscal strategy of balancing budgets, protecting fund balances, smart sizing city government. And I also mentioned that to protect the city's future and to ensure that we protect our ratings as a city, credit ratings, we are adamant on paying down debt. And since we took office in January first of two thousand and sixteen, I'm happy to report to you on the long-term bond debt. The city of Indianapolis was able to pay a little over one hundred million dollars of debt that the city owed. Specifically, if you look at the blue bar of the chart that you're looking at, that represents general obligation bonds. The blue, the red bar represents tax increment revenue and moral obligation debt. And then the green bar represents our revenue bonds. So we're happy to report that we're paying down the city's overall long-term bond liabilities. My final slide, we talked for two years or two years and a half about smart sizing city government. And every budget, I made a point to share with you a few examples of the things that we were able to smart size. I'm happy to report to you that one of the major areas that we're investing in that we will see significant savings in two thousand and nineteen to the tune of seven million dollars is in healthcare spent for the organization. On an annual basis, the city of Indianapolis spent almost nine percent increase year after year on healthcare. We were able to contract with a wellness program, and we sent our employees and their families to benefit from a great wellness program at a cheaper rate. Since we are a self-insured city, we pay for every claim. As a result of the wellness program that we enacted two years ago, the two thousand and nineteen budget will maintain the level of spend on healthcare similar to eighteen. And that translated into avoiding a nine percent increase that the city has historically budgeted on an annual basis from year to year. You will hear from ISA, the Information Services Technology Agency, that they were able to save close to one million dollars on renegotiating contracts and working with partners such as the state of Indiana on retiring old hardware and moving into state-of-the-art, modern data centers at the state of Indiana and other locations in the state of Indiana. That allowed ISA to save close to one million dollars in the nineteen budget. Revenue recovery under the Office of Finance and Management engaged in collecting outstanding debt that is owed to the city of Indianapolis, and we're projected to collect five hundred thousand dollars more in two thousand and nineteen. And my least, my last example, we engaged in renegotiating a few leases. And there was a lease that was up for renewal recently for one of the county agencies that we were able to renegotiate and save two hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is not an exhaustive list of smart sizing of city government, but we want it as a city to demonstrate to our taxpayers that we care about their tax dollars. We want to be always good stewards of their dollars. Want to be sure that we're balancing budget, budgets, we're paying down debt, and we're protecting the city's rating agencies. And we're keeping the city of Indianapolis open for business, for jobs, for investments in our neighborhoods, a great city to live, play, and work in. And with that, I conclude my presentation, Mr. President.
Thank you, Controller Kadura. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number Three Hundred, introduced by Counselor Simpson, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, proposes a resolution of the Marion County Local Tax, Local Income Tax Council to request approval from the Department of Local Government Finance to lower the levy freeze tax rate and to cast the vote of the City-County Council on such resolution. Proposal Numbers Three-O-One through Three-O-Four all refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal Number Three-O-One, introduced by Counselor McQuillan, appoints Jason Dudich to the Indianapolis City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal Number Three-O-Two, introduced by Counselor Jackson, approves a request of the Metropolitan, of the Department of Metropolitan Development to purchase certain real estate owned by Andy Diamond LLC for a Public Works project at nine zero one two Pinehurst Drive. Proposal Number Three-O-Three, introduced by Counselor Robinson, approves the statement of benefits for TC Heartland as an applicant for tax abatement for property located in the economic revitalization area. Proposal Number Three-O-Four, introduced by Councilors Adamson and Cordy, adds a section to the code regarding the use or threatened use of devices to induce performance by animals. Proposal Numbers Three-O-Five through Three-O-Seven all refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Proposal Three-O-Five, introduced by Counselor McQuillan, appoints Jim Sullivan to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Proposal Number Three-O-Six, introduced by Councilors Osely, Adamson, Gray, and Robinson, approves the tax levy and rate for the Police Special Service District for two thousand and nineteen. Proposal Number Three-O-Seven, introduced by Councilors Osely, Adamson, Gray, and Robinson, approves the tax levy at a rate for the Fire Special Service District for two thousand and nineteen. Proposal Number Three-O-Eight, introduced by Councilors Osely, Adamson, and Gray, refer to the Public Works Committee, approves the tax levy and rate for the Solid Waste Collection Special Service District for two thousand and nineteen. Proposal Number Three-O-Nine, introduced by Councilors Osely, Adamson, and Gray, refer to the Administration and Finance, Education, Metropolitan and Economic Development, Parks and Recreation, Public Safety and Criminal Justice, and Public Works Committees, adopts the annual budget for the city of Indianapolis and Marion County for two thousand and nineteen. Proposal Number Two-Three, Proposal Number Three-Twenty-Six, introduced by Councilors Osely, Lewis, and Mascary, refer to the Public Works Committee, approves the issuance of Indy Roads bond in the amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty million dollars. And if necessary, interim financing notes to fund certain thoroughfare, infrastructure projects, streets, road, bridge, traffic signal, curb and sidewalk construction, reconstruction and improvements throughout the city, and approves and authorizes other actions in respect thereto. Mr. President, this include, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposal Number Three-One-Four is a rezoning ordinance certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on July the twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the proposal will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposal will pass into law. Proposal Number Three-One-Five is a rezoning ordinance certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on August the third, two thousand and eighteen. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the proposal will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposal will pass into law. Proposals Number Three-One-Six through Three-Two-Three are rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on August the third, two thousand and eighteen. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing no one, the proposals will pass into law. Proposal Number Three-Two-Four is a rezoning ordinance certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on August the seventh, two thousand and eighteen. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the proposal will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? Seeing no one, the proposal will pass into law. Proposal Number Three-Two-Five is a rezoning ordinance certified for denial by the Metropolitan Development Commission on August the third, two thousand and eighteen. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the proposal will stand as denied. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? Seeing no one, the proposal will stand as denied. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing. There is no business under Special Orders Public Hearing. There is no business under Special Orders, unfinished business. We will now proceed to Special Orders Final Adoption. And the next item on our agenda is Proposal Number One-Eleven, which is referred to the Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal One-Eleven came before the Admin and Finance Committee. The committee voted to strike six to zero, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 227, referred to the Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray. Are there comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 21 to 3. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 267, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 267 designates a portion of Michigan Road north of Fox Hill Court to 63rd Street and a portion of 63rd Street from Michigan Road as the Bishop Edwin Hamilton Bond Memorial Way. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 270, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. These next five proposals need to be voted on separately, so I have to read them separately and vote separately. Is that okay? Thank you.
Please.
Proposal number 270, 2018, approves a lease by the Board of Office of Public Health and Safety as governing body of the Public Safety Communications System and Computer Facilities District to finance upgrades to various structures, equipment, and systems designed to allow various public safety and other entities within Marion County access to inoperable radio communication systems and improvements related here thereto. Mr. President, Mr. Paul Babcock and Chief Al Stovall both presented at the Public Safety meeting, and the presentation spoke about the special taxing district, which was created by IC 36-8-15-7, which covers Marion County, including excluded cities, the current depth service, which was $40.6 million over the next nine years. The project details included IMPD, IFD, IEMS, Community Justice Center, general operations, and network infrastructure upgrades, and Motorola covers a 10-year warranty for the lifecycle of the radios. Chief Stovall stated that the Motorola is the best solution to meet the needs of the Public Safety Communications. And Counselor Simpson moved, seconded by Counsel Oliver, to send proposals 270 to the full council to do pass recommendation. Vote carried by a vote of 8 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Counselor Scales.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several concerns about the proposals before us this evening. You know, as a counselor, I can't make a judgment as to whether any vendor's public safety communications equipment...
I'm sorry, just one moment, please. Chairman.
Counselor, excuse me, wait to read all five of them. I only read the first one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was asking...
So I read the first one. I have four more. You want to wait until...
Pardon me.
It's up to you.
I'm so sorry.
I only read one. You need to vote on one and then...
Is that fine by you?
So I can read all five until the record and then we can vote independently on each one of them?
That's very good.
Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead, Chairman. Thank you.
Proposal number 271 approves a lease by the Board of Public Health and Safety as governing body of the Public Safety Communications System and Computer Facilities Division, District, to finance the replacement of radio equipment for the Marion County Sheriff's Office and other entities related to community justice and civil law enforcement in Marion County and improvements related heretoo. Proposal number 272, 2018, approves a lease by the Board of the Office of Public Health and Safety as governing body of the Public Safety Communications System and Computer Facilities District to finance the replacement of radio equipment for various police departments and related public safety entities within Marion County and improvements related thereto. Proposal number 273 approves a lease by the Board of Office of Public Health and Safety as governing body of the Public Safety Communications Systems and Computer Facilities District to finance the replacement of radio equipment in entities that provide fire, rescue, and/or emergency medical services within Marion County and improvements related thereto. And the last, Mr. President's, proposal number 274 approves a lease by the Board of Public Health and Safety as governing body of the Public Safety Communications Systems and Computer Facilities District to finance the replacement of radio equipment for governmental entities in Marion County that do not provide first responder or law enforcement services and improvements related thereto. In those notes, Mr. President, we're up for all five proposals, and once again, those proposals were Counselor Simpson moved, and seconded by Counsel Oliver, to amend, and that they all passed 8 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Chairman, if what we can, let us just go ahead and have discussion, and then after discussion...
Absolutely.
We will have individual votes.
Absolutely.
All right. Fellow counselors, are there any comments on the proposals as read? Counselor Scales.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I'll start over. I have concerns, grave concerns, about this particular proposal or the several proposals that are before us. You know, as a counselor, I can't make a judgment as to whether various public safety vendors' communications equipment is superior to that of its competitors. It's up to those who use the equipment to evaluate the strengths and weaknesses of various vendors' products. But we counselors rely on the objective analysis from public safety experts to recommend the best product line at a reasonably negotiated price. One of my concerns is that the contract proposals before us this evening used a no-bid process that resulted in the 10-year, $30 million lease contract that's before us. $30 million is not chump change. No-bid contracts have actually been outlawed in some states for use by government agencies because they've been shown in multiple studies to have led to wasteful and inefficient use of public funds. Now, city officials have defended the use of this no-bid process as Motorola has a purchasing agreement with the state of Indiana, which provides a legal exception to most bid requirements. But city officials are savvy enough to know that regardless of legality, no-bid contracts lower the chances of receiving a fair value price for the equipment or service being purchased due to the lack of competition. Had competitive bidding been engaged in, it's likely that public safety officials would have discovered that several vendors' communications equipment offer the same features and benefits that they claim can only be found in Motorola's equipment. And products from other companies do offer interoperability with their competitors' equipment. Each company uses their own laboratories to test other vendors' products with their own to ensure this. The manufacturers whose products offer interoperability and comply with the P-25 network in place in Indiana are published publicly. And this past year, the state of Indiana's Integrated Public Safety Commission solicited requests for information to multiple vendors so that they could test public safety communication systems and ensure that proper testing standards by companies had been complied with. Given that a no-bid process was engaged in, I think that public safety officials should have engaged in a formal, data-driven evaluation process to have at least minimal understanding of comparable equipment available on the market. Even when state contracts are in place, professional public safety organizations such as FEMA and the United States Fire Administration recommend that such evaluations take place. But what is noteworthy is that a Motorola competitor also enjoys a purchasing contract with the state of Indiana. And just a quick comparison of the two companies' contract price lists should have piqued interest as Motorola's competitors' contract pricing was on an average $1,250 less per handheld unit than Motorola's contract price. And what is equally puzzling is that Motorola's state contract lists product models that are obsolete and have been replaced by other models. So I have to ask, how can a contract be negotiated off of a list of obsolete equipment? One more thing, that is odd and begs explanation, is that the contract pricing listed on the state website gives prices that are lower than what has been negotiated by city officials and Motorola in the contract up for vote this evening. Given the questions and concerns regarding the spending of $30 million and the lack of a systematic, data-driven product evaluation process of competing vendors, I ask fellow counselors to postpone this evening's vote on proposals 270 through 274 because, you know, a delay of the vote tonight costs us nothing, but a rush to approve can cost the public dearly for years to come. Thank you for your time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Scales. Chairman.
No, I don't have any other comment, Mr. President, other than we do have some expert individuals in the audience who may want to speak to those concerns, Chief Stovall and Mr. Paul Babcock.
Very good.
Thank you.
If they would come forward. I believe we also have Scott Williams, who's vice president of the firefighter union, if he's willing to speak as well. Director Babcock.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for your time. Introduce myself to Paul Babcock, director of the Office of Public Health and Safety. And with me I have Chief Al Stovall, who's in charge of Public Safety Communication Systems, and we're here to address some of the concerns that were raised by Counselor Scales. So first and foremost, I think from a technical perspective, it's important to understand that the quantity purchase agreement that the state provides to local governments is actually a bid. And when you look at the statute, it says that local governments who entertain or utilize the QPA are entertaining and embarking upon a lawful bid. And what it does give us access to, though, it gives us access to the purchasing power of the state of Indiana, which is a much larger entity than we are as a local government, and it allows us to then look for what meets our needs versus being focused on solely the price, the RFP, the amount of time that goes into that. And so it allows our men and women who are public safety professionals the ability to see what they need and what really is working for them and therefore working for our citizens of Marion County. From a larger perspective, the process has been going on for almost two years. I think most of you have somehow heard about purchasing radios since at least I've started working here. And so what we did was we embarked on a comparison. We knew we had access to the QPA, and so we invited EF Johnson, which is the competitor that Counselor Scales was mentioning, and Motorola to come down to Public Safety Communications and show us their radios and let public safety professionals utilize them, and they have. In fact, EF Johnson has left their radios at Public Safety Communications and has failed to come and pick them up after we said they were available. So we embarked on this process while at the same time of utilizing, how does the radio work for us? We went and talked to our user groups, so IEMS, law enforcement, fire, what do you need? What are the technologies? What are the different types of networks and systems and even buttons on a radio that you need to make your job easier, more successful, safer, and at the same time, better able to protect us citizens of Marion County? So I'm going to let Chief Stovall talk about some of the differences in the radios, and then we can delve into some of the cost differentiations that were mentioned as well. Chief?
Thank you. First, I'd like to state for the record that the radios that we're purchasing from Motorola are not obsolete. They are the radios that are supported for at least a 10-year period. Motorola's committed to that. We're not buying any radios that are currently not being manufactured to date in the current proposal. In fact, the second point I'd like to make is that regarding the pricing, the state QPA pricing only addresses a base model radio. The radios that we configured are beyond that base price. That's why you saw the difference in the price. That's why it's a higher price because we added more features and functionality to the radio in terms of GPS chips and things like that, which raised the base cost of the radios. We certainly enjoyed the 36% discount that was offered through the state QPA pricing, but in addition to that, through other components that were necessary to deliver a comprehensive solution to our public safety folks, we achieved another probably 20-plus percent. So overall, the proposed radio agreement that you're considering today is more than a 50% discount below the price that they list for. Again, it includes functionality that we think to the best of our ability. We've been able to future-proof that, you know, with technologies, there's no way to predict what technology's going to look like in 10 years, but to the extent we can, we've done that with this particular solution with Motorola. We feel good about the package that we're getting. Again, for me, it's about making sure we get the right radios in the hands of our law enforcement and firefighter and IEMS personnel to do their jobs effectively, and I believe we've done that, whether it's Motorola or any other vendor.
Mr. President, if you may, I just would like to add that there's a... One, when we reached out in the course of this discussion, one of our public safety partners indicated to us that they have, at one point, purchased radios from the competitor, and they now sit on a shelf because of the maintenance costs, the uses issues, and they found them to be ineffective for what they were trying to do. And additionally, there's a great article online where an analysis of this company's system was done in Kokomo, and it really provided a number of issues for their public safety personnel that with our integrated system, we have addressed from both the CAD system, which we were able to purchase last year, the new radios, and as well as, which is on top of this purchase, a network upgrade. So we'll be upgrading the entire public safety network system to allow for more seamless communication amongst our public safety personnel to better protect our citizens, but to also better protect them when they run into birding buildings or they're, you know, chasing after a suspect. So we believe that this is the correct purchase for the council to consider, and we'd be more than happy to entertain any other questions or comments, Mr. President.
Questions from counselors. Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to stay clear on the motion to postpone, the Democratic Caucus counselor suggested that this was a rushed process. Could you just talk us through, I mean, I want to make sure this wasn't a rush to judgment. How much time has been taken to take all this into consideration?
Again, we've been working on this process since 2015. So from our perspective, it's not rushed. We've been attempting to vet the type of product that we needed, the type of radio we needed for the folks on the street, in addition to considering options from EF Johnson. When we started this process in 2015, there was an individual that currently doesn't work for PSE anymore that led that process. So during the evaluation of EF Johnson, that person has since left that process. But early on, we discovered that the quality build of EF Johnson radios, what didn't meet up to the standards that we were looking for, the emergency receiver button, which is the button that you press to put a radio on emergency status, so if an officer needs assistance, they can get that assistance fairly quickly, it would not connect to our system. We had spotty coverage in the Eagle Creek area where radio coverage didn't work consistently as well as Motorola radios. So for those, those are some of the things that, after talking to this individual, he pointed out that were really clear risk to moving any... pointed out that were really clear risk to moving any further with the EF Johnson proposal. And there were other issues as well in terms of the build of the radio, the knobs associated for firefighters not being large enough to accommodate glove usage and things like that.
And then I would just also like to add that from a financial analysis perspective, we've worked over the last six months with CFO Brown, as well as hiring our own outside consultants to look at that part of the package. So both in terms of the product quality, how it helps our citizens, how it helps our public safety professionals, as well as the financing behind it, there's been a thorough analysis.
Thank you. I will go to Counselor Scales, who had her hand up next.
Thank you, Mr. President. When I talk about an evaluation of products, I'm talking about a data-driven, systematic evaluation. The evaluation that I believe you're talking about is one that occurred two years ago when Counselor McHenry was asked by one of her constituents to show EF Johnson's products to the public safety officials. And so during a meeting, it was just very casually tossed around, never any data received back as to whether, you know, a certain number of first responders had actually used the equipment, under what conditions it had been used, any kind of analysis of the product and evaluation of it that was summarized and could be objectively looked at and appraised. In your very own, you asked one of your own firefighters to testify at the last Public Safety Committee and talk about the evaluation process that had been undergone with the EF Johnson products. And he came up and said, "Well, I've worked with Motorola's, but I have only seen the EF Johnson products at the FDIC convention and in Denver." So again, what I'm talking about is something that has numbers, that, you know, has some kind of objective analysis that has been done for a time certain, a certain period evaluation, that can be trusted. And I don't believe that's what occurred here because I also asked if you had any kind of this data that I'd been asking for from an evaluation. It was never provided to me. As well, EF Johnson, their corporate executives, vice president, have said they were fully unaware of any evaluation. In fact, they didn't even know that this large of a contract was up for consideration. So I don't think that you're being quite truthful in saying that a thorough evaluation was performed because where's the evidence of it? And the other thing is, is that each product does have its problems. Motorola, you know, I mentioned in committee, it had problems that people in firefighters in Cincinnati and police officers were complaining about those products. Each product will have its problems. And so in terms of the pricing differences, EF Johnson, I'm sure other competitors as well, would have been eager to provide some kind of a price quote to the specifications that you were seeking for your communication system, but they weren't given that opportunity. So, you know, that's what they were seeking, and that's where I think we get fair pricing and good products is when we have open competition. Thank you.
Can I speak on my integrity here?
Chief Stovall, please proceed.
I absolutely have been forthright with you. I take exception to your inference that I'm being untruthful here today because I'm telling you the truth. With regard to the firefighter that I called up, again, we started this process in 2015. I thought that this was a firefighter who was pushing for an EF Johnson evaluation. I was mistaken on that after speaking with him after he made his comments in the committee hearing. So I had the wrong firefighter in question. We did actually evaluate the radios. They didn't perform well in our environment. We believe that we've had Motorola radios in our environment for over a decade. They performed exceptionally well for us. We have over 800 of the new proposed radios currently operating on our system effectively with no problems whatsoever. So for me, as a 32-year firefighter, when it comes to deciding what I want to purchase, do I want to take a chance on somebody just because they have something that might be a lower price but may not perform well over time? When I talk about performance, I'm talking about I want to make sure that our officers are confident in the equipment that they have to use, that it's reliable on our systems, and overall, the total cost of ownership to the city is effective. We've achieved great value in the discounted pricing upfront for the radio. So in my opinion, I have demonstrated fiscal responsibility as a public servant to this city with a 50% discount on that. Is it the best price that we can get overall? I don't know. But I do believe that value for performance and history with this particular vendor, I am confident that we're making the right decision here.
Chief Stovall, I made the comment about the fire--
Sorry, Counselor Scales.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Allow me, please. Counselor Feaster.
Thank you, Mr. President. Beyond the discussion that was just held and the fact that the agencies have chosen the Motorola product, I'd like to go back to the QPA for a moment and clarify the no-bid comment. When a QPA is established at the state, they go through the same process that we would have gone through if we had put it out to bid before they settle on this one particular product to offer in the QPA. Is that not correct?
To the best of my knowledge, that's correct.
That's correct, Counselor Feaster.
So it is, in essence, all of the hoops have already been jumped through before we go to the state to choose this product.
Yes, and that's the advantage of utilizing the QPA as a local government entity. It allows you to avoid some of the bureaucratic hoops that are placed in front of us, and it allows us to get our hands on products that we think, or that we know are there for our benefit.
And still get a product that state agencies have requested and meets their specifications.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Did you have a comment? I believe, Counselor Gray.
I think when we did this CAD thing some time ago, at the same time, were we not also thinking of radios that would be capable to work through the CAD and putting together a kind of a package deal to make sure that everything lined up?
So at the time we purchased the CAD, we had no clue that we'd be buying radios from Motorola at that particular time. We did an independent assessment on what the right CAD vendor was for that particular time. We selected Motorola based on the merits of feature function and what our needs were at that particular time, and again, reliability, demonstrated capability of delivering a product in a tier-one city, a large metropolitan city that has a high degree of reliability that it's going to work. We believe we made the right selection with Motorola. In addition to that, because we've selected Motorola as our CAD vendor, the radio offers additional functionality that no other vendor can match right now because there is some built-in engineering there that allows for two-way messaging to come from the radio directly. So CAD dispatcher can actually send a text message to an officer if they're on a stakeout and they don't want to have audio communication. They can send a text to that particular device and utilize some functionality that isn't available through the competitor and affords our public safety officers greatest sense of security. That's number one. Number two, the GPS tracking, there is a feature in there that allows for every time a radio is keyed up, this part of our package here, that it will actually show the location of that officer through automatic resource location. So those are a couple of the enhancements that no other vendor currently, because we have a P1 CAD getting ready to get deployed, can duplicate.
Counselor Kreider.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Director, I serve on the committee, and it is my understanding from your testimony at the hearing and here today that with these radios failing, there's a sense of urgency that we need to replace them. And I'd like to note that we delayed the original hearing on that matter and postponed. So my question for you is, in your opinion, would a further delay raise any concerns that would impact our public safety? And then I have a follow-up question as well, Mr. President.
Well, because you graciously agreed to allow us to have a special committee hearing, we did not lose any time in this process to date. So we're still on the same track of delivering the radios. This is about a nine-month implementation from start to finish, so we really need to have these new radios being distributed on the street by January of this year. That's the end of support for the existing system, the existing radios. That doesn't mean that they're not going to work, but it does mean that we may have problems getting parts and things like that to keep our radios functioning.
Counselor Kreider.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to note, we do have a number of firefighters and officers here today. I mean, these are the folks who are going to be using it. Would it be appropriate to hear from them if they have tested these and what their opinion is or preference would be on these different radios?
That's very good. I believe we have Scott Williams from the Firefighters Union, if you might step forward.
My name's Scott Williams, both resident, 5414 Graceland, Councilwoman Fanning's District, and also a representative for the Indianapolis Professional Firefighters. I represent 2,300 firefighters, EMS, and communications personnel. Obviously, we have great interest in this process. I don't want to get too dramatic, but there was a time where we had a tragic incident in the city. And one of the factors that was cited strongly in the report was the lack of good communications, and including, as already mentioned here tonight, the ability for a firefighter to be able to push an emergency button with her gloved finger. Cost one of our members dearly. He survived, but he has the marks to prove it, and I'd have you to bring him down here if that should become necessary, I suppose. But these radios, Motorola radio, is essentially the gold standard to the best of my knowledge. And I travel around the country in my duties as a union officer. I've not come across another area, with the exception of Milwaukee, where anyone is using other than a Motorola radio. And to bring it down to a level most people, I think, would understand, everybody's bought an aftermarket charger for their phone. It works for a while, but it's not designed to work exactly as a manufacturer of the phone intended. It doesn't work over time. And this CAD that has already been purchased will work with Motorola radio, will be upgradable, and it doesn't require a patch, it doesn't require adjusting. You know, I didn't intend to get into this, but EF Johnson was not prepared for this bid, and at that committee meeting, I watched a representative go up to the clerk and say, "I don't really know how city government works." I don't believe that's somebody we want to put 2,300 lives plus all the firefighters. I don't represent them, but I care about them. But I don't want my members' 2,300 lives on the line with a product that is not accepted as a gold standard, is not designed to work directly with the CAD system that we will be using, and that does not have the features, including, and I can get into some of the details, but for firefighters, one of the biggest advantages of Motorola radio is the ability for it to blackout background noise. We work in a loud environment. A fire ground is a very loud environment. These radios work quite well. We do have them in place, and I have one on every apparatus where I work. And it is able to keep the background noise from being transmitted and allow the person's voice to be transmitted, which is what we need. So with that, happy to take any questions. I do need to be up a couple minutes more. My wife is watching at home. She doesn't think I'm here, so I need about four minutes. She may be in the bathroom. I'll make sure she gets a chance to come back on.
Mr. President, I don't know how much longer. It's a little disappointing that we had this discussion in public safety. And Chairman Robinson was very considerate in coming back on a second meeting to discuss this, and it's just feel that when I look out in the crowd and I see the people sitting there, especially those Cub Scouts, I want to know, are they earning some badges or something like that? But it seems that time is running, and I think that we've heard this story before. I want to call for the question.
It's been called and seconded. So we'll go to a vote on the question. Shall the debate close now?
Point of order, Mr. President. I had my hand up before this proposal to call the question was made, and I'd like to be able to refuse--
I'm sorry, but Counselor Scales, you have spoken twice already.
Pardon?
You've already spoken twice to this proposal.
Well, but they have said things that are open to refuse, and so I think it's almost there--
Sorry, Counselor Scales, there's no debate on this. We are going to take a vote right now on the calling of the question. So green is to end the debate, red is to continue the debate. If the motion passes, we proceed to a vote on the underlying proposals. Green is to end the debate, red is to continue the debate.
Mr. President, I made an error. I wanted to continue the debate.
Can you note that, please? You want to continue the debate, is that correct? Yes. All right. That motion passes to end the debate, 22 to, I'm sorry, 22 to 2. All right, so now, Counselor Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 270. First, Counselor Simpson moves, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send proposal number 270 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of eight to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. We proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 23 to 1. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 271. Counselor Feaster moves, seconded by Counselor Simpson, to send proposal number 271 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of eight to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. We will move, proceed to the board for our vote. A motion carries 23 to 1. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is proposal number 272. Counselor Oliver moves, seconded by Counselor Feaster, to send proposal number 272 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of eight to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. We proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 1. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is proposal 273. Counselor Feaster moves, seconded by Counselor Kreider, to send proposal number 273 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. I'm sorry, due pass as amended recommendation. As amended recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of eight to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. We will proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Gray. Motion carries 23 to 1. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. And lastly, proposal number 274. Counselor Feaster moves, seconded by Counselor Kreider, to send proposal number 274 to the full council with a due pass as amended recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of eight to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. We proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Westler. Motion carries 23 to 1. Mr. President. Counselor Gray.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say I hope that those guys are making the proper decision on these radios. As a 35-year veteran of the Indianapolis Fire Department, I can tell you, there is no greater fear than-- tell you, there is no greater fear than to get trapped in one of those buildings and cannot communicate with the people outside.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 275. Refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 275, 2018, recognizes gun violence as a public health crisis in Indianapolis. Counsel Jackson stated that this proposal is not to change the Second Amendment or the right for persons to protect themselves or their families. She said that the proposal is to recognize gun violence and violent crime as a public health danger in Indianapolis. Counsel Jackson said that this proposal will address systemic issues such as mental health, conflict resolution, programs for youth and adults, and the growing drug epidemic. The proposal will recognize gun violence and violent crime as a danger in the city of Indianapolis. It also gives priority funding in setting budgets and appropriating funds to initiatives and programs that are designed and have demonstrated genuine success, and the proposal will seek funding to alleviate the public health danger. Counsel Simpson moves, seconded by Counsel Oliver, to amend proposal number 275 with Exhibit B. Counsel Crider stated that the words, quote, "and violent crime," end quote, is missing from the last whereas in Section 2 of the proposal. He moves, seconded by Counsel Simpson, to amend the amendment per Exhibit C. Counsel Coats asked if he could have an explanation of the word changed between crisis and danger. Counsel Jackson stated that the wording was changed so that Indianapolis would not be negatively stigmatized nationally. She said that the wording was changed to be more holistic in the approach for presenting this proposal. The motion to amend carried by a vote of 10 to 0. And Counsel Simpson moves, seconded by Counsel Scales, to send proposal number 275 to the full council with the due pass as amended recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 10 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Comments from counselors. Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a brief statement I want to read.
Please.
Injury, trauma, and death are medical issues, not gun control issues. This conversation is tonight, and this proposal is not about gun control. It is about harm reduction models to reduce violence in our city. Criminal justice reform alone will not be enough. We have to go hard at prevention, harder at understanding, and even harder about caring about others' lives. Dr. Gary Slutton said that quote. From 1985 to 1991, homicide rates for 15- to 19-year-old males increased by 154%, which is higher than the previous 20 years combined. Epidemiology research and protocols can be applied to violent study. In the sheer number of victims and impact in their health, if gun violence were a virus, we'd be in pandemic mode. We would declare emergency at a current level. An entire generation of young African-American and Latino youth are affected. Violence spreads in the same way that diseases do: clustering, transmission, spread. In direct impact, exposure to violence leads to chronic disease, mental health, and trauma issues. Increased risk of becoming a perpetrator. Prolonged exposure affects the center of the brain that enables decision-making later in life, and that effect becomes worse over time. How do we address this, recognizing this as a health issue and not as a crime issue exclusively? We go on to address social determinants of health. Expand research opportunities to study the impact of gun and violence in our communities. Expand community access to conflict de-escalation, conflict resolution, and mediation services. Change the conversation from gun control to health issues like leading the cause as they did in lead poisoning, smoking cessation, and vehicle safety. This is a harm reduction model, not a regulation issue. In 2015, the American Public Health Association reports that gun violence had a $229 billion effect on communities. Let me read that again. In 2015, the American Public Health Association reports that gun violence had a $229 billion effect on communities. This is approximately 1.4% of the US GDP. And I'm going to leave you with this. I am a gun violence survivor. I was in Washington Square Target Eric Mall when that incident happened in October 2015, and I couldn't imagine those who have lost lives and those families who experienced death and injury due to gun violence. This is a health issue. I had over nine months of occupational and physical therapy. I had numerous hospital bills and doctor's bills from that. I had a surgery related to that incident. I was off work due to that incident, and I have trauma that I don't think will ever leave me. I have experienced classmates who've died to gun violence and violent deaths, and it's in our communities. It's in my district. I'm one of the districts that have the highest District 14 gun violence and violent crimes, and I want to help our people help themselves and give them the help that they need. That's what this proposal does. It's not to take guns away or affect anybody's right to defend themselves, but it will allow us to do a few things. One, recognize that we do have a problem here in Indianapolis. Two, to be able to authorize and prioritize how we, as a city council in the city, spend our money towards reducing crime and violence in our city. And three, having the Office of Public Health and Safety and the Marion County Health Department work together to bring in more resources, funding, and programs and services into the city, into the program areas. Now, you may say, now, all areas are affected by this, and I disagree with you. If you are a taxpayer, and if you live in Indianapolis, Marion County, in some way, you'll be affected by the crime and gun violence in our city. I will leave you with this, but this quote, and I'll say, and I didn't have this whole idea by myself, but after the Malaysia shooting of the one-year-old girl, if you all remember that, it hasn't been more than six months, we did a peace walk from an area in my district to her home and back. And we were trying to strategize, what could we do as city leadership to, President Osley was there, to say that we're trying to move the needle. There are some great programs out there, but holistically working together as a city. And the person and I who were talking remains to be unknown, but put some literature in my hand that gave me the idea to move forward with this proposal. And I'm telling you, folks, if we prioritize and put our money where our mouth is and our resources and come together, it takes all of us. It takes, we're advocates as a council level, but from a community level, a business level, government level, working together, we can start moving the number to decrease crime violence so that lives can be saved, families can be healed, and we can win the war on this thing in our city. And I'll leave you with this. If gun violence isn't a health issue, why are so many people dying? Thank you.
Counsel Crider?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counsel Jackson for her leadership. I was on that committee and worked with her to amend the language, to expand it, to include also violent crime. I'm an ardent defender of our rights, including the Second Amendment. But as a responsible gun owner, I do not see this as any infringement on any of our rights. Instead, it's simply recognizing basic facts that unfortunately exist in our city right now. Today marks the 100th homicide in what's becoming the third record year in a row. Many of those from gun violence. We're also at 250% the national average of violent crime. And these facts, they're disturbing, they're ugly. We cannot ignore them. They demand our attention, and they're a stain on the fabric of our vision of a welcoming city. Recognizing those facts is not an attempt to strip our rights. It's just a show of respect and solidarity with the victims and their families of the problems that plague our city daily. So, I urge all of you to join Counsel Jackson in supporting this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Crider. Counselor Simpson?
Thank you. I called the coroner office today and got some numbers as of June. Homicide, these are the folks who basically say how people, death occur. They had homicide 104 as of June, drug overdose 160 as of mid-June. And all this has to do with a mental health situation. You know, I guess drug overdoses, mental health. Homicide is the same way. What I'm saying, if you hadn't been at that meeting when we, Public Safety, met and saw the victims losing a loved one in their face, and one having to come to talk to us about how they just left a funeral home, this is a real issue. And I'm going to hang this sign up one more time. We can, we can end gun violence, and I think that this proposal, Counsel Jackson, appreciate you, love you, because if we don't, if we don't start, it's not going to stop. And I think that this, taking this into where we can get proposal for funding to help people with, you know, I'm talking about people who became a victim as well as the people that may have other issues, but I think this proposal should. And I'm requesting that all my counselors, please vote yes.
Counsel Oliver? Did you have a, please?
I can make a comment supportive of proposal 275, Mr. President. Thank you. On the side of mental or emotional health, yes. Almost after every shooting, particularly mass shooting, there's a crowd that says, "If the officials had spotted that person earlier or had reacted earlier, oftentimes, these things would not have occurred," meaning that there was something in that person's behavior that revealed some type of mental anguish. And if that had been detected, or we had things in place to detect such a thing, perhaps these things, many of them, would not have happened. So, I come back on the side, yes, it is a mental health issue, and for the reasons that I've already given. Because when it happens, the perpetrator and others examine that person's past, and they say there were signals of that person's behavior that would indicate that they had a mental, emotional problem. So, therefore, Mr. President, I'm asking my colleagues to support proposal 275. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel McCollum?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, would like to thank Counsel Jackson for her passion on this issue through her own personal strife and situation. I certainly understand why your heart is where it is on this issue. As this is a non-binding proposal that has absolutely no teeth, I'll point out first that you've already had a win tonight by raising this issue about violence in Indianapolis, and if nothing else, you've helped to bring that to the forefront even more. My question for you, though, is Counsel Jackson, is when we had initial conversation about this, you talked about some possibilities of federal funding or state funding or other funding issues that this non-binding proposal would bring about. I just wanted to check in with you and see what you'd found or what you'd learned as far as possibilities that money could be brought into our budget, or money that could go to community groups here in Indianapolis as a result of this proposal possibly passing tonight. Thanks.
Counsel Jackson?
Thank you for that. Although you said this is a non-binding proposal that has no teeth, it does have teeth. It recognizes the issue here in Indianapolis in that there are real people with real problems who've been affected by gun violence and violent crimes. With respects to that, this proposal directs the Office of Public Health and Safety and the Marion County Health Department to prioritize looking for resources and additional funding that could be federal funds, that especially the Health Department could obtain for this issue, to bring in models that will work here, program models that will work here for us, for this event. So, we don't have that research yet. This is the first step. We've seen some other models in other cities that I would like to use. So, there are things out there that we can implement on a local grassroots base, where in the areas and the neighborhoods where majority of the problems are occurring. Like I said, some feel it's not throughout the city, but to hit where the areas are. And so, they, this proposal will allow us, as a council, to prioritize some budgeting, which I've already talked to the mayor, Mayor's Administration, tonight, and we already had some ideas on some things. But again, it directs them to also, again, the administration, the Marion County Health Department, to work together in unison on this issue, which this is the first of its kind. I don't think it's been done before. So, to say it has no teeth, legal binding, those are words, but it does put us in a direction to start doing things we haven't done to reduce crime and violence in our city.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the troupe did come here tonight, particularly for this proposal, but also to learn about the council, I wanted to read what one of them said. A long time, known him since he was a little kid, Justin. And I do agree with all these comments. "Too many people are getting hurt and killed for horrible reasons, reasons that should never be. Young, innocent children and teens are getting shot and killed. We all want the whole world, and of course Indianapolis, to be safe, but not only for adults, but for children, teens, young adults. I know I'm not the only one that feels this way, even though I have never had to walk in fear of my life, walking outdoor, or seeing someone who I think is a friend in fear they could gun me down. I know people who have, and it breaks my heart, and I want that to change. I don't want to keep seeing story after story on the news of a young child or teen or anyone who's been gunned down. There are people out there in the crowd, meaning the crowd here tonight, that have lost people dear to their heart due to gun violence." And so, I suspect he would ask us to vote yes tonight on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Miller. Counsel Jackson?
Thank you again for letting me speak. There are some, we could partner with the CDC. I said that in, I didn't say it here, or look through the CDC. I said that at committee. But also, there's some funding through Cure Violence. There's a list of organizations who work with cities and organizations to provide funding for violence issues. So, there's funding out there. This gives us opportunity as a city, holistically, to go after that funding to address our issues here on a local level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments from counselors? All right, saying none. The motion's been properly moved and seconded. We will proceed to the board for our vote. All right. Sorry, fellow counselors, we're having a little technical issue here. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and we will take account. All right. Opposed? Please raise your hands. Very good.
What is the number?
21, yes. Motion carries 21 to 3. Okay, Counsel Jackson?
Thank you. Thank you for everyone who came tonight. You'll be hearing more from us. We'll be working in your community. So, when you have an opportunity to come out and get engaged, please do so. And you can reach out to me at any time. And thank you to my fellow counselors who urged and thought this was a... And thank you to my fellow counselors who urged and thought this was a noteworthy proposal to move forward, move our city in the right direction to helping us to continue to decrease crime and violence in our city. Thank you all, and God bless you. And to my co-sponsors who added themselves, Mr. VP Adamson and Chairman Simpson, thank you so much for being added to the proposal. I appreciate you guys, God bless.
Thank you. Woo!
The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number Two Seventy-Six. Refer to Public Works Committee Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take Proposals Two Seventy-Six to Two Eighty-Two. Thank you. Proposal Number Two Seventy-Six authorizes speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Grand View Garden, Hoover Park, Stony Brook Trails, and West Lane Terrace subdivisions, District Seven. Proposal Number Two Seventy-Seven authorizes intersection controls at Capus Street and Westview Drive in District Sixteen. Proposal Number Two Seventy-Eight authorizes intersection controls at the Carroll Farms subdivision, District Fourteen. Proposal Two Seventy-Nine authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour within the Carroll Farms subdivision in District Fourteen. Proposal Number Two Eighty authorize a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Saddlebrook subdivision, District Eight. Proposal Number Two Eighty-One authorizes intersection controls at Eastbourne Drive and Radner Road in District Thirteen. And Proposal Number Two Eighty-Two authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour within the subdivisions in the Lynnhurst Drive and Mooresville Road area in District Twenty-Two. Counsel McHenry moved, seconded by Counsel Kreider, to send Proposals Two Seventy-Six to Two Eighty-Two to the full council, with a due pass recommendation that motion carried by a vote of eight to zero, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from counselors? Saying none, we'll proceed to the Board for our vote. All right. Fellow counselors, apologies. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Do you have a count? Those opposed, please raise your hand. All right. Motion passes. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. There is no business under Special Service District Councils? Am I missing one? Sorry. Forgive me. Proposal Number Two Eighty-Three. Refer to Public Works Committee Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chairman, Mr. President.
Mr. Rules. Two Eighty-Three is me.
Thank you. Proposal Chairman Robinson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Who's the chair of Rules and Public Safety Committee? Proposal Number Two Eighty-Three, two thousand and eighteen, establish a study commission to review and analyze information gathered from infrastructure experts and to recommend operational policy changes and potential long-term funding options. The proposal passed as amended by a vote of six to zero. Mr. President and Chairman of the committee, I so move.
Second.
There's an amendment. Chairman.
That's him, not the chair, yeah. Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I do think there's an amendment on this proposal.
All right.
I can do it.
Counsel Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend Section Three and Four, Proposal Number Two Eighty-Three, as previously amended in committee by deleting the language that is stricken through and inserting the underscored language to read as follows. Section Three adds members, strikes thirteen, adds fifteen members. Fourth line, or third line, strikes two state representatives and adds six members of the General Assembly and strikes two state senators invited by the four council members of the commission and adds three citizen members referred by, adds three, and then the second to last line, add two citizen members recommended by the minority leader and appointed by the council president. Section Four adds the words quorum, proxies, and vacancies. Second line, strikes seven, adds eight. Third line, from the bottom, strikes seven, adds eight, and I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Saying none. We'll proceed to the Board for our vote. The motion carries twenty-four to zero. There is no business under Special Service District Councils?
The whole thing is amended.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. President, I...
Please, would you make a motion? Thank you.
I moved to pass proposal as amended. Second.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any additional comments from counselors? Saying none, we'll proceed to the Board for our vote. Counsel Cordy? Motion carries twenty-four to zero. There's no business under Special Service District Councils? Just a moment, counselors. There is no business under new business. However, I do have a clarification. Counsel Scales, it was unclear whether you actually made a motion on Proposals Two Seventy to Two Seventy-Four. Was there a motion made? All right. Then, unfortunately for the record, then, we just need to, just to indicate that the motion failed for lack of a second. All right. Thank you, counselors. The next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournments. Counsel Kreider, I believe you've requested to make an announcement.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I'd like to just report to my fellow counselors and the public on the Veterans Indigo Bus ID Program. I'm pleased to announce that as of noon today, one-thousand-one-hundred-fifty-three applications have been submitted. I want to thank all of you for your support of the program. This project is a great example of how intentional and purposeful action has an impact on our city every day. That's one-thousand-one-hundred-fifty-three lives that have been changed because of this program. So thank you all for your support.
Counselors, the document on agenda from the meeting of council has been completed. The chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Counsel McCullin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. By all counselors in memory of Glenn, Reese, Evan, Aria, Irvin, Horace, Belinda, Angela, and Maxwell Coleman. By Counsel Jackson in memory of Harry Talifer. By Counsel Adamson in memory of Sybil Fay De Stefano. By Counsel McCullin in memory of Donna Michael Shea and Thomas Riley Luger. By Counsel Cordy in memory of Betty J. Howell, Harry Bud Rex Wiseman, Kathy Jackson, and Tom R. Staley. By Counsel Feaster in memory of Jimmy Hofer, Ray Wykoff, Elmer Combs, Carl Lambert, William Stegelmeyer, and Henry Stoffler. By Counsel Osley in memory of Lieutenant Larry S. Walker. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body, and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counsel McCullin. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned.